Lorenzo Love and Don Marie Autry.
Join the meeting.
Georgia is swinging by less than one percentage point for Ossef and by one and a half for Warnock.
Oh, close then. Wow, real close.
Yeah, it looks like it looks like the Senate will be a split. The only thing that I would say is I think if they split, if they take both seats, I would bet a hundred dollars that Joe Manchin in the next month will change his affiliation from Democrat to Republican and swing it that way.
Oh, really?
From Virginia. He's voted more with the Republicans and. Yeah.
Hey there. Been trying for 15 minutes. I'm finally in.
Oh, that's not good.
No, it's okay. I called Arthur and he got me in.
I sent, I just sent you a text message so that we can wish someone a happy birthday.
Oh, yeah, I saw that. I saw that. And I thought that I put that in Dwayne's mailbox. Did you get it, Dwayne?
I'm needing to go look.
Too late.
I should have went to my notebook first, I guess, huh?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. I can see you all.
Uh oh.
Uh huh. Well, I thought if, you know, if it didn't work, I would just trot on down there and sit in the back row or something.
Brown cabinet, swing it to the left. And there's a tray in the middle. Top shelf.
A top shelf? What are we looking for?
Not alcohol. That would be ink pens.
Maybe, maybe dinner. Where is Steve? I can hear him, but I can't see him.
In the corner.
Steve, are you up in the corner?
Yes.
Okay, participants, we have a few. We have Liz, we have Lorenzo Love, we have Rheta. We have five three oh, six four three, one six three eight, and we have five three oh. Yeah, we have lots of numbers. It's like cellphone numbers. And Arthur, hi, Arthur. There you are. Hi. Thanks for getting me in.
Oh, very happy I could help.
It said that the host had to let me in. And you be the host. You be the host. You be the host. Yes. Steve, you are way in the background. Wait, wait, wait. We can't hear you.
Yeah, there's no microwave back or microwave, microphone back at the, the computer with the camera. Yeah, you're getting picked up by the microphones down at the council's table.
By the way, I noticed this then, when the microphone in the chambers is happening, it's not defaulting to that screen. Is this something I need to do?
Yeah. So at the top right corner, you'll see like a three by three grid and the word view. Okay, so click that. And you want it to go on to gallery view if you want the Brady Bunch style.
Yep.
Display.
And I'm safe because I have my mask.
Aren't you at home?
Yes, I am. But I was almost down there. I was gonna sit in the corner. When I couldn't get in, but Arthur worked his magic and got me in. Thank you, Arthur.
You're very welcome.
So Steve, let me know when you're ready.
It's 6:30, you guys. Oh, it's 6:31.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to call the order, the city council meeting of January 5th, 2021. We'll all go ahead, rise and saying the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America. With liberty and justice for all.
People in the chambers, please silence your cellphone and anybody else might interrupt the meeting too. This meeting has been.
What happened, Arthur? I froze. I can't hear anybody.
That's so bizarre. I'm, I'm still good. You're still good, but they're not.
They're frozen.
Hmm. I mean, text Steve.
Okay, yeah, good idea. I will too. Might have to go down there. Ah, that's weird.
Arthur, I noted Steve's muted.
Steve is muted. Let's talk to Steve. Of course he is, because the mayor told him to mute. Wayne, I wonder if Wayne will.
Does anybody know sign language?
Yes.
You mean this, like this? Just, just cross your hands. Guys, are you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, you were frozen for a while, but now you're back. Thank you.
I guess we can go ahead then. Okay, when I just repeat part of that during the last, or during the call, you may press nine to raise your hand and ask to speak during the meeting. Speakers will be asked to identify themselves. This is time for public comments. Council may ask questions, but may take no action during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare, report, or place an item on future agenda. If you're here to make a comment, comments on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is a time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Speaker, state your name and mailing address so that the staff can respond to you in regard to comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. So this is the time for public comments. Is there any public comments out there, Arthur?
I don't see any hands raised.
No. And if you're on the phone, please press star nine to raise your hand to be recognized for speaking. Oh, we do have one public comment. It looks like Lori Delgado, I believe.
Oh, I see her.
Hi. Hi, yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I, I will make it very, very short. I am a retired RN. I had been the nursing supervisor of the old hospital. And the, the reason I'm here tonight is just to stay on, hopefully, the homeless people, just to stay on an agenda of some sort. The ongoing need for our homeless people in the county, and that's it. Okay, that was all. Just wanted to make sure we weren't forgetting them.
Thank you. Yes, no, thank you very much. Yeah, we've been, there's definitely been a lot of concerns on this, and we're, we're definitely addressing a lot of, lot of huge issues that we need to really address. This year is, I think I've discussed this before, this year is a real tough year because of the whole COVID situation. It's made very complex on being able to take care of the, of the problems that we're facing with the homelessness and everything. But we definitely are addressing a lot of issues. We have a couple more meetings coming up that we're gonna make some huge changes and hopefully see some funding coming through to hopefully address some more of the issues. So thank you so much, Lori. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All going to caring. It's very, it's very good that knowing that those members of the public out there that care. So thank you.
Yes.
Alrighty then.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more. Looks like a caller six four three, one six three eight.
Who is that?
All right, Speaker.
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you. And this is Don Marie Autry. I called the mayor last week to speak to him, and all I got was his, all I got was his business phone, left a message. I never got a call back ever. And it was to talk about the 23-year-old that froze to death, who was a homeless man. And I know that this city gets money for homeless people. What are you doing with it? Why are you not going over every dollar spent? Why are you not giving us progress reports every time? And my name is Marie. It's one name, Don Marie, not Murray.
Well, thank you, Don Marie. If you want, I can definitely have a discussion with you. I'm sorry I did not get back to you. I did not realize that somehow it got lost in, at my work. My cellphone number, though, I have no problem giving to you. It's five nine eight, nine six six three. And I'd definitely love to have some more conversation with you. Tomorrow would be great, if that's at all possible. So if that works for you.
Um, I have, I have to go to Medford tomorrow. I have to take my car to the doctor. But it would be really nice to have your cellphone on the website where it belongs, so that everyone in this town can give you a call when they need you. Not call your business and never get a call back.
Well, I'm pretty sure it was on the website, but if not, there you have it. I'll make sure it does get posted on the website.
Will you repeat it one more time, please, because I didn't have a pen?
I'm sorry. I, I don't, I thought it was posted on the website.
She mentioned your number. Repeat your number.
And, but I, I definitely will get it on the website, so you can call me. Like I said, my number is five nine eight, nine six six three.
Six six what?
Nine six six three. Sorry, I'll put my mask down temporarily. Nine six three.
Nine six six three. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and I will be calling that number on Friday, because I would like to speak of this. And I don't know why we go over every other money issue and not this.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that, and I'll be looking forward to talking to you on Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Any other, any other public comments?
None at this time, sir.
Okay, great. We'll move on to number one. Discussing possible action consent calendars. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion unless the member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from December 11th, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. B, approval of the minutes of a meeting held December 17th, 2020. C, adopt a resolution extending the suspension of section 1376, 010 of the Waringham Municipal Code, allowing installation of the banners of, on Fairlane Road. D, acceptance of the treasurer's report and budget to actual for the month of November 2020. Wave and, excuse me, wave full text readings of all ordinance on the agenda. Ordinance shall be introduced and adopted by title only. What is the wishes of the council on this one?
This is Councilman McCoy. I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar.
This is, this is Councilmember Freeman, and I second the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Paul McCoy and a second by Joan Smith Freeman. Do you please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Lieutenant Barrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Here you go. All right, move on to number two. Discussing possible action. A, conduct a public hearing for the adoption of the resolution and introduction of the ordinance review associated actuarial determined cost relating to modification of the city's retirement contract with Calpers, Calpers Actuary present to include Peppera Fire Safety 2.7 Act 57 formula. E, adopt a resolution in the intention of, to amend the city's contract with the public employees' retirement system hereafter Calpers to include fire safety. C, introduction, first reading of the ordinance, mending the city's contract with Calpers to provide retirement benefits to fire safety. And who's this? You first, Steve, or?
I know, this will be Rheta.
Okay.
Great. Good evening, everyone. We are fortunate this evening also to have a guest. Mr. Nate Jensen from Calpers also available this evening to just be able to answer any questions you might have on the actuarial study. But as you read in the staff report, this has been a process with Calpers to introduce the.
Lorenzo Love and Don Marie Autry.
Join the meeting.
To introduce this evening, the ordinance, present the actuarial study, and also resolution with the intent to sign an agreement with Calpers. At this point, um, if you have any questions, I'll answer those. Otherwise, we can open the public hearing for comments from the public and then turn over to Mr. Jensen for comments.
Start off, is there any ultimate comments first or questions, and then we'll go to, then we'll go to the members of the public.
We've discussed it quite extensively, so I'm good.
It's routine.
Right, right. But discussed it pretty extensively with staff. And it, I'm interested to hear from Mr. Jensen, but it looks good.
So do we want to open up to the public first? Is there any comments on the public? And then we'll go on to the introduction through that.
Mr. Jensen.
Do you have something, statement that we need on that?
Yes, sir.
I don't think you heard your call. Being calling. Do we get a hold of?
Mr. Jensen's name's on.
I'm calling out and saying. Oh, are you ready to, for presentation?
Uh, yeah, this is Nate Jensen from Calpers. So I am the actuary that performed the costing valuation for the city of Weyrekka's proposal to adopt the 2.757 Peppera Safety Fire Plan. That would be a plan for, it looks like one member so far, that was included in the valuation, who would receive a hundred percent prior service from the date that they were hired. That it appears to be in April of 2020 until the valuation date, which was November 30th, 2020. The report that was previously provided kind of provides a general overview of the costs for fiscal year 2021 and 2122, as well as some projected costs that for the next five years, showing both the normal cost percentage and the unfunded accrued liability, as well as the Peppera employee rates for the rates that the members would be paying under the Peppera legislation. Specifically, the fiscal year 2020, 21 rate would be a 13.044% employer normal cost rate and a 13% Peppera employee rate. So the employers and the employee will be roughly paying about 13% each. There isn't an unfunded accrued liability portion on the fiscal year 2021 rate, and that's because Calpers bills starting in the, bills the unfunded accrued liability, starting in the following fiscal year after the planned contracts. I am able to, do you guys, are you familiar with the difference between the normal cost and the unfunded accrued liability? Would you like me to go into details of what each of those components are?
Why don't you go in, yes, please?
Sure. So the normal cost percentage that's set for the plan is typically the amount that would be needed to pay for a single year of service. So for any member in the plan, it's the amount that goes into the plan to pay for that year that they're currently working. Whereas the unfunded accrued liability is the portion of the benefit that's already been accrued that hasn't yet been paid for. In this case, that portion of the benefit that hasn't yet been paid for is only the lesson, one year of service that this member would have earned between April of 2020 and November of 2020. If you have the reports available in front of you, there is a page in the report on page nine that it shows the total balance of the unfunded portion of the liability as of the valuation date, which was November 30th, 2020, and it was about $16,709. Uh, the way that Calpers charges the unfunded accrued liability is we amortize it over a fixed period. And for, in the case of new category evaluations, so this would be a new category evaluation for the safety fire category. We amortize it over a period that is equal to the average remaining time that the person would remain employed by this plan. In this case, that's about two years, because the member is on the relatively older side. And therefore, based on Calpers's assumptions about when individuals retire, we are kind of expecting that he'll retire fairly soon. And we don't necessarily, we are trying to avoid a situation where the unfunded accrued liability is paid off way down the line. We prefer to put it in a situation where it's paid off relatively soon, so that later members to the plan aren't paying for past service that was accrued by members that are no longer employed by the agency. Uh, for this particular instance, you'll see that the unfunded accrued liability cost is gonna be about $9,292 for fiscal year 2122. And we're estimating that it'll stay about the same in the following year. In reality, it may be higher or lower. Each year, if the plan contracts, we assess the, the, the liability of the plan based on different assumptions, such as whether the plan has met the investment return assumptions that we make. So for example, Calpers currently assumes that there will be a 7% return on assets for the entire Calpers fund. And if the actual rate of return in a given year is higher than that, we credit to the plan a gain, which will actually be used to offset the unfunded accrued liability. So it'll be a credit to the plan that will lower future contributions. Conversely, we're, if there's a lower than expected investment return, it'll be a loss to the plan, and the plan will be charged a higher payment in the future to cover that loss in investment returns. Uh, we do that assessment every year, and we look at a wide number of different assumptions. The investment return is usually the biggest and the most volatile, but the other components of that are things like whether someone has retired sooner than we expected, or if the members in the plan are living longer after retirement, then we would anticipate all of those different things go into the cost of when we reassess the liability on a yearly basis. Each year, when we reassess the liability, we'll add what we call amortization bases to the schedule of plans amortization bases that's shown on page nine. And we'll reassess the cost and amortize those new gains and losses over a fixed period according to the Calpers policy. Are there any questions up to this point? Is there anything that I can clarify or? That was.
Very clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Nate.
Sure. Also, in the report, there's some additional information. There's some risk measures and so forth, such as on page 13 of the report, there's an analysis of what your rates might look like if the plan were to experience different investment return scenarios over certain periods. Uh, so for example, it looks at a 1%, 4%, 7%, 9% and 12% investment returns if they're earned for years consecutively, and how that might increase or decrease the costs to the plan. Uh, there's also some sensitivity analysis that'll show if Calpers ends up moving towards a higher or a lower discount rate, how that might impact the accrued liability and the plan's cost. Uh, this is on page 14. For example, currently, Calpers is beginning its, uh, every four years, it does a review of the discount rate assumption. Uh, that's the investment return assumption. Uh, we're currently beginning that process for the upcoming year. And it's, as part of that, the board, the Calpers board is gonna reassess whether the 7% currently assumed rate of return assumption is appropriate. And as part of that, they're gonna look at several different options and several different portfolios that'll have different investment return assumptions and different. That'll have different investment return assumptions and different um uh, risk classes. And they're kind of look at that and kind of determine if which is most appropriate uh, for the level of risk that they want to determine. And as part of that, it is a possibility that the discount rate could be lowered. Um, we are nationally in a an environment of lowering discount rates. And so it is very possible that the discount rate could be lowered. Which is why on page fourteen, we provided that sensitivity to the real rate of return assumption, which shows the increase to the total normal cost and the increase to the total accrued liability. If the discount rate were to be lowered. That exhibit on that page shows if it were lowered to six percent or raised to eight percent. Uh, most likely, if the Calpers board did decide to lower the discount rate, it wouldn't go all the way to six percent. It would most likely be somewhere in the middle. Either just depending on the level of risk that they're willing to take and what they feel is the most appropriate in uh, investment return assumption over the long term. Uh, similarly, there are sensitivity analysis on that same page. Uh, in the event that's post-retirement mortality, so the rates at which people pass away after they've retired, um, there's an analysis of those rates were higher or lower than we expected. And there's also an analysis if we were to change our inflation assumptions. So our assumption for the consumer price index. Sure.
So is there any other question from the council?
This is a uh, this is Paul McCoy speaking. Um, C is actually in, this is the first reading, correct? So do we need to uh, do we have action on A and B? Or do we do it all at once?
This is Reda. We need the resolution of intent and acknowledgement of the public hearing.
A, B, and C.
Mayor, I think you've done uh, A. I mean, you'll need to close the public hearing, um, I believe, unless you already have.
Yeah, I stated that. So if there's another, no other public comments and we'll close the public hearing part of this. Then Councilmember McCoy will make a motion to adopt the resolution introduction, the ordinance and review associated actuarial determiner cost related modification of the city's retirement contract with Calpers to include uh, Pepper.
Tim Shaw.
Join the meeting.
To include Pepper Fire Safety two point, two point seven percent and fifty seven formula. That is what we have the, actually the public hearing on.
Correct.
And then continue with that, continuing with that motion to adopt B, to adopt a resolution of intention to amend the city's contract with the California Public Employment Retirement System herein after referred to as Calpers to include fire safety. I will endeavor to leave C out and have it pop back up for our next meeting.
Well, no, we would.
We still need to.
We would introduce it at this meeting.
To acknowledge its first reading.
This is, then I will, I will acknowledge that this is the introduction or first reading of an ordinance amending the city's contract with Calpers to provide retirement benefits to fire safety, but C is not included in the vote, correct?
Um, actually, we do.
Yeah, I think it'd be included in this.
As a first reading.
First reading just as it states.
Yeah. That's just, that's the practice here.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, that's just as a first reading as it states.
Okay, then let me, let me correct my motion. I will make a motion, a motion for action uh, to uh, acknowledge that we have conducted a public hearing for the adoption of a resolution and introduction of the ordinance and review associated actuarial determiner cost related to modification of the city's retirement contract with Calpers. And with a Calpers actuary present, that would be Nathan Jensen. Um, to include Pepper Fire Safety at two point seven, two, two point seven percent at fifty seven formula. To be adopt a resolution of intention to amend the city's contract with the California Public Employees Retirement System herein after referred to as Calpers to include fire safety. And C, the introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending the city's contract with Calpers to provide retirement benefits to fire safety.
Perfect.
We're good again?
Councilmember Barrett, I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Paul McCoy and a second by Debbie Barrett. Go ahead and do roll call, please.
Certainly. Mayor for Tim Barrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor K.
Aye. Okay. Carry it on and we'll have another reading then, I guess, the next, next city council meeting, we'll have another reading on that, correct? Or is it later on?
That will be in February.
All right, we'll move on to number three, discussion, excuse me, discussion, possible act and adopt the resolution of the city council of the of the city of Warricka approving and adopting a comprehensive pay schedule for all full-time employees, part-time employees, and elected officials in accordance with Calpers guiding lines. And this is Reda again, or?
Yes.
This, this is your, um, just to um, recognize the um, negotiated salary schedules for the twenty twenty one um, for employees and um, in an actual resolution recognizing those um, in compliance with the Calpers um code regulation sections um, five seventy C um, on that um, to disclose salary, available salaries for employees, part-time employees.
Have any questions, Reda?
No, may I um, digress for a minute? Um, so we've, we've, you announced the agenda item. Um, we've invited the appropriate person to report on the item. The next thing would be, correct, if we have questions, right? Is, are you going that way with the Rosenberg rules?
Oh.
Because.
On, on what's, I guess we're going back to last.
And then the, and then the fourth, I did, the fourth uh, thing would be to then invite public comment after we're done. I don't know, we've not been doing that in the two years I'm on and after we've had some talks about um rules of order and things, I've gone over Rosenbergs and I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page. That we're all following the same rules that were given to us when we took over as a councilperson.
So we are, you're actually going back to two and asking.
No, you've done, you've done the, you've done, you've announced the agenda item. The chair invited the appropriate person to report on it. That was Reda. And the chair is now asking members of the body, that's the council tech, for technical questions on clarification, correct? Yeah, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay, yeah, that's.
Typically, we do public comment first. I just want to make sure.
I see what you're saying. I, I got you.
Right, I want to make sure.
I got, I got you. Okay, that's fine. I'm sorry. Yep, got you.
No, you're fine. You're doing great.
Gotcha. Okay, so since I'm doing it backwards, let's continue on. Is there any?
No, 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 you're doing it perfect.
No, no, good. I just was asking, is there any, any comments first or questions? And then I'll, like I said, I'll do it backwards. Is there any member of the public then that has any questions? The comments on this.
No, you're doing it the way it should be according to Rosenberg right now.
Okay.
You're doing perfect. Thank you, sir.
I just want to make sure. Get it all right.
I don't see them.
No public comments?
So this is Councilman McCoy. I will make a motion to um, just to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Warricka approving and adopting a comprehensive pay schedule for all full-time employees, part-time employees, and elected officials in accordance with Calpers guidelines.
Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
Second by Corey Middleton. All right, roll call, please.
Mayor for Tim Barrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor K.
Aye. All righty. Cool. Moving on to number four. Discussion possible action adopts resolution finding engine forfeit to at the Warricka Fire Department as surplus equipment and authorizing sale by the city manager. Something that the chief is going to call them on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just Tim Shaw, the fleet manager was hoping to be in on this too. He's having a hard time watching.
Oh, okay.
No, he's there. Tim's there. He announced himself.
Right. So he's just going to stand by if you have questions that I'm not able to answer.
Okay.
Anyway, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, regarding items number four this evening, as you see, um, this Warricka Fire Department purchased this apparatus in two thousand eight. Um, and it was served, um, done a great job up until probably a year and a half ago when we started experiencing um, extremely um irrational electrical problems and uh, computer-related issues that the fleet manager has um, attempted to repair himself and also have it shipped out to uh various different shops and they have not been able to correct the problem. They've talked to the manufacturer, their electricians, their engineer.
Tim Shaw.
Join the meeting.
And to this point, um, we spent, you know, a good amount of money, fifty five thousand dollars plus. Uh, the apparatus has been out of service at times when we needed it. Um, weren't able to respond to some of the vegetation fires and whatnot that we could have, you know, used it on. So then the most important thing here to, to understand is that through all this, um, some of the major safety um uh, safety items are, that we encountered were um, lost of headlights, you know, during a, during nighttime.
Oh, geez.
Highway two sixty three, which you can imagine what that's like. And, you know, they're intermittent, they would go off, you know, come on or go off, come on again. Um, the queue siren was uncontrollable going down the road, but you couldn't shut it off. So that's a distraction. You don't need it, you know, when you're responding, it's
Yeah.
Um, it's, it's a safety hazard as well. Taking the uh, intermittently taking the pump out of the pump function where, you know, it doesn't pump water, which is obviously another safety factor. So it has gotten to the point where we have to make a decision on what to do. So discussion with the department and the fleet manager, uh, it became evident that we needed to take action. So what we're requesting this evening is um is to give the information and request um, a resol, uh, approval of a resolution to auction this item um and get the best money we can for it and put that towards another apparatus down, down the road shortly.
Yeah, so it's, it's safety reasons, we, that's a no-brainer. We can't afford to have the liability that this thing puts on us. I mean, please, that's huge. Going down a highway and you lose your headlights, that's not a good thing.
Right, that's probably the most egregious in, in addition to losing your pump if you have people inside the structure.
Fire.
Exactly. So they're pretty obvious to the, to the common, you know, the layperson even. So for us, it's even more critical because we, you know, we depend on that. That's our, that's your lifeblood is having strong water. So.
You have a safety issue when you have firefighters in and the alarm goes off to tell them to come out and you don't want to, you know.
Right.
When the siren goes off, that tells them to come out.
Correct.
And malfunction. So, yeah.
Yeah, all, all in all, I mean, it's been a good, it's twelve years old. So there's that factor which, you know, you're looking at, you know, we wanted to get some more time out of it, but this is something you don't, it's an unexpected thing, just as you might experience with your own vehicle, but
Yeah.
When it's an emergency operations vehicle, emergency vehicle, much different. So we don't want to put anybody at, at risk.
I got a question. Auctioning this off, do we, is it auctioned off like as a parts only type of thing because of liability wise or how is that?
Well, in, in the past with apparatus that we have um either surplused out or sold to, we wouldn't want to sell it to another agency here in the county. So fleet manager, which like Tim, if you're on, you can um, jump on and, and I can have Arthur recognize you and jump on. But essentially, it was a plan to have it on, there's some different websites that he was going to advertise it on that are, you know, have a wide distribution as far, or a wide reach as far as clientele. So we would hopefully get it out of the area and, you know, somebody can use it because it is four-wheel drive. It's
Right.
It's definitely something that somebody can use. It's just not prudent for us to keep spending money on something when, you know, it's at that point where it's, are you going to keep it, put more money into it?
Right.
And maybe not fix the problem, maybe still have the same issues, um, because it has, the, the modules alone are twenty five hundred dollars apiece and he's replaced some of those, but there's like ten of them.
Oh, geez.
So anyhow, um, that's, so we would, we would promote or um state that we'd want to have it on an auction site that, you know, is nationwide.
Yeah.
So it would go as is.
Yes.
Obviously, with anything used caveat emptor.
Correct, and we would, we would retain all the equipment that's on it, hose, tools, that sort of thing, obviously, so.
Um, yes, a couple other things. Number one, I do think you've done due diligence, trying to correct the problems. Throwing in fifty five thousand for repairs is
Yeah.
is great. You did your due diligence, but uh, my other concern is selling it as a, an unsafe vehicle. Could could the, the attorney make sure that we're not liable for any consequences down the road with this vehicle when sold?
But what we generally, the way that I believe that it works is that we would make disclosures on what the buyer does buy as is. And it may be perfect for a department that has volunteered or
So we can advertise it as a lemon and unsafe.
You would advertise it as it is. That's typically how you advertise any automobile.
Yeah, as is, but we would, you know, we, we want people to know what they're getting.
Please.
Tim's on. If you want to add something to that, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we, we would sell it on a uh, gutdeals.com and it would be under a full disclosure. There wouldn't be any uh, you know, anything held back. It'd be like selling anything we have at any auction that we do normally. Everything is, is like you say, is as is, uh, the buyer would have to inspect it. And, you know, so forth and so on.
Will they have all the um record of the repairs and attempts and problems? Do the records go with the vehicle?
I would keep, I would, I would send the records, but I would keep a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Does anybody else have a comment? Um, my question, Councilman Middleton, is, is there a minimum bid that it goes up for auction? Is there a minimum bid that's placed on the?
I'm not familiar with that. I'll, I'll let Mr. Shaw, Tim, if you could answer that question, did you, did you hear the question?
Yeah, minimum bid normally not.
You could get though, I mean, you might get a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand, or that would, that would be helpful in different cost of the, the new one, it would be new. Less than measure. See money or whatever, yeah. Is that approximately worth, is that a hundred thousand, as is?
No, I would say, I would say no. Um, it'd be, I'd be surprised if we got uh, twenty five or thirty, to be honest with you.
Okay.
And that's generally, uh, Mr. Uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, isn't that generally the way that it works? And maybe Tim and, and Jerry can say that usually, especially if it's a piece of equipment that needs a lot of work, it generally goes for less. That's what we.
Normally a lot less.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, it doesn't soothe the pain anymore. It's just you get to the point where, you know, when it comes down to safety and safety of firefighters and then eventually ultimately the public too.
Exactly.
How, how much, how much further do you want to go when, you know, it's twelve years, you'd have to make a decision within a few more years anyway, to try to keep the rotation of older apparatus, you know, in play and keep that in, in your process. So it's a little soon, much sooner than we wanted, but it's also something that may work. Maybe a blessing in disguise.
Yeah, for somebody else, it might be the, the perfect parts that they needed for their system. So somebody might get something that can do some good use someplace else. So that's what we got to look at. And that's just like anything else, as we look at uh, new cars versus used cars when we, when you get to certain
Right.
certain uh, point in your life, you don't want an old used car that might break down every time you want to go to the store. You want something that's reliable. That's basically what you've got to look at in this aspect. We, we need something reliable for our city to, for protection of us and for the citizens and, and for our firefighters and stuff too, because they need that protection also, so.
We affectionately call this apparatus Christine.
Is there a Christine? We should, no, never mind.
No, yeah, so all your questions are, are, are spot on. So I appreciate your.
One of the pluses with this, in my opinion, is that um, the Warricka Fire Department is able to purchase another vehicle. the Warricka Fire Department is able to purchase another vehicle, maybe not exactly the same, that will be more effective for their usage in two thousand and nineteen than it was in two thousand and five.
Right.
That they're, they don't have to buy the exact same thing. So.
No, things are changing, things are changing all the time. There's something that you guys might need that's, that would be suited for you anyway. So.
It gives them flexibility.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right. I guess, is there any, uh, members of the audience has any questions before we, before I address a motion? Anybody out there in the audience?
As a reminder, please press star nine to raise your hand to speak. I see no public comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Um, this is Paul McCoy. I will make the motion to adopt a resolution finding engine four fifteen of the Warricka Fire Department as surplus equipment and authorizing sale by the city manager.
And this is, um, Councilmember Freeman and I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Paul McCoy and a second by Joan Smith Freeman. Proceed. Mayor, pretend mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kent. Aye. Alrighty. Cool. Well, thank you. Thank you, Tim. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, a discussion possible, action appointments to various committees here. So we'll open that up. Five here. Alrighty, do you want to start it off or how do you want?
I should do that, I think. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna go through this whole thing even though there are appointments on, but just to remind you, all the different things that city council members do outside of these. And it's funny, it's like, my glasses are foggy enough and exactly.
Of course.
So the city council appoints, uh, members directly to the finance committee, which is a subcommittee of the city council, to the Collier Interpretive and Information Center Agency, or the famous C two C. And to the Regional Solid Waste JPA, which, uh, currently remains quite correctly. Uh, in addition, the mayor serves as a city representative on the following, the Siskiyou League of Local Agencies or LOLA. I always want to stick to that. The Association of Governmental Agencies, or Sage, uh, which has not met in a, a number of years, but, uh, is, is a body where all of the, um, various governments get together and talk about items of mutual concern. The mayor also serves as the alternate for the finance committee. And then they approach him at X, serves as the alternate for LOLA and Sage. There is a city selection committee, which is made up of all of the mayors within the county, that, uh, appoints representatives to the uh, local transportation commission or LTC, the local agency formation commission or LAPCO. In addition, we don't have it on here, but I understand that they just recently appointed someone to the air pollution control district. That's by them. So what we're looking at is for the council to appoint two council members to the finance committee, remembering that the mayor is the alternate. Uh, representative and alternate to C two C and representative and an alternate to the regional solid waste, um, JPA. Obviously you can decide, uh, wow, I guess, I'll let you decide how to, how to do that.
Okay. So let's, I guess, open it up for the finance committees and I would just like to open that up to any volunteers first and foremost. If there's any, uh, able volunteers, I'd love to hear from them.
I'd like to continue on it.
Okay, that would be great. I would love for you to continue on that one.
And I, I'd like to nominate Joe.
Okay. So are there any other, um, people that have any nominations or?
Doesn't she have to accept the nomination?
I accept and thank you, Paul, for nominating me. I was just about to volunteer. So thank you.
If there's any other, if there's no other volunteers, then I would just like to pass that on through the finance committee of Paul McCoy and Joan Smith Freeman.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I think.
Volunteering that.
It's always a fun one.
Rhonda said, she'll work with us.
Thank God for Rhonda. That's all I can say.
Yeah.
Alrighty, we'll move on to the Collier Interpretive Information Center, the C two C. Um, I'm kind of hoping that Debbie will step right up into that position again since she's did such an awesome job.
I nominate, I nominate Debbie.
I would not, I nominate Debbie also.
I think everybody stepped back one pace.
Can I also nominate Dwayne as the alternate? He's done such a good job.
I'm all for that. I'm, I'm, yeah, for the very few meetings I had to show up to. But I, I accept that. And if there's any other questions or comments or volunteerism, then speak up now. Not if we'll say C two C is Debbie Baird and Dwayne King.
Good. Yay. Thank you.
Okay. And now the last, not least, the Regional Solid Waste JPA. Do I have any volunteers on that one?
Oh, Paul. Who's into poop?
On a joke.
I don't even know if they're still meeting. Are they still meeting, Steve?
They, um, they meet incredibly rarely.
Yes.
I believe that, um, they needed to meet at one point, needed a representative and all of the representatives had, were no longer in office to the idea.
Right. Erickson, Levina Erickson from the Board of Supervisors was on that and chaired that for years, but she retired a long time ago. So I don't know who's even chairing that.
Debbie's the one that turned me on to it like eighteen months or nineteen months ago. So I have to. Bella, a big, uh,
Yes.
Which I don't know what that means, but is there any volunteers for?
I'll nominate Cory for an alternate.
Cory, yay, Cory.
Cory, you accept?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Cory.
Great. Paul is the first and then Cory is the second alternate on that one. So I'll move on then.
Actually, uh, there, I, you've done it by consent, but what I would like to do, and if, if you're willing, I will simply, um, tell you what a motion I'm looking for.
Okay.
Uh, so the motion should be that the council appoint, uh, Paul McCoy and Joan Freeman to the finance committee through your terms. Debbie Baird as the, um, C two C, uh, representative to C two C.
The representative, right.
Dwayne King as the alternate and Paul McCoy as the representative and Cory Middleton as the alternate to the Regional Solid Waste JPA.
Okay.
I'll pick the motion if you want.
What he said.
What he said? Okay. It's recorded, it's on record. So we don't have to do that again. Okay. So we got a, a motion by Paul. And we have a second?
A second, Debbie Baird.
Debbie Baird, a second. Alright.
Just have to go all in favor and then.
We can assess this, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kent.
Aye. Okay. Then didn't deal with. Especially that finance committee.
Oh, boy.
I will just mention that we will be, um,
Unless we all jump.
scheduling a finance committee meeting, uh, as quickly as we get the members together. There are a couple of items that we would like to, uh, just prepare so that they can back in the book.
Schedule it. Joan and I will be there. Just.
Yep, just let us know when.
Yes.
Okay. And then the mayor, the mayor gets all the other committees. Congratulations.
Oh, yeah, Sage and all that stuff.
All the fun stuff. Lola, just, Lola just got.
Get out and start singing.
Whether it's Lola once, Lola.
One of the things that you should know is that if we ever do sing LOLA, we will change the words to be locally relevant rather than the song lyrics.
I don't think the Kinks would like that.
No, we have to pay them to use their song.
Have to pay BMI or SGAF. You're right.
A bill for BMI. They want to bill me for three hundred and sixty-five dollars. I'm bringing you the bill. So I don't know what we've been singing, but we've got to stop.
Yeah.
Singing the blues.
So in conjunction to that, Steve, I mean, we have, you know, a couple of other things that we never, we ever really finalize. I mean, as, make it official. Do we need to, so like, um, as far as, uh, fire safe council, I know that's not official meeting or meeting thing, but I know we were talking about having, um, Representative, Mr. Middleton on that and representing the fire safe council.
Okay, so there are some sort of, I will call them voluntary
Correct.
things that, that people attend. And I would probably recommend that you continue to leave them, uh, voluntary unless you really have a, a real need.
No, no, I, unless the rest of council wants to make it formal, I don't know if we really need to.
There's, because there's a, a number of different ones that I would, that are just sort of because of interest, people uncover them and report back to the council as opposed to, and a lot of these don't have formal appointments to them. Like, for example, a fire safe council, I think if you show up, you're part of the activities.
Right.
So.
The only thing I can say is like with us doing homelessness coalition now, we are starting to not necessarily make requirements, we're with like the cities, Mount Shasta weed, uh, they are representative of that, of that city for the organization and it's, it's all, we're all kind of almost making a requirement on that because we do want that representation for the different cities, especially the main cities that represent Siskiyou County.
If, if, in the past, when they were forming that, um, it was not an environment that the city formally appointed a person.
Right.
If that changes.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm not sure that it will.
Yeah. Like I said, it hasn't as of yet. We were just discussing that we, we just want that representation. So as of right now, no, we haven't made that formal, but, uh, but yeah. But be encouraging as a.
If the need arises, we may have to make it formal is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
We might have to. The way things, the way things are heading, we might have to be a little bit more because we are, the meetings are definitely more formal than what they used to be, obviously. It's rep, you know, now we're represented for the whole North State. So it's a little, little different scenario than what you used to when we first started this whole process. So.
And it's not something that's going to go away.
No, no, it's definitely not going to go away. It's something that we definitely have to talk of and address more and more for the future.
There's, there's finally starting to come down the pipeline some money next year for homeless. I mean, we, we haven't had, there hasn't been money coming from the state for, for homeless for, for anything.
No.
And finally it's coming through the county, I think.
Yeah, there is, there's definitely some more funding that's hopefully coming through. This, this year, like I said, was a little, I won't get down without on my report, but.
Like that H H A P.
Yes, yeah. Yeah.
Right. But, uh, Mr. Mayor, as I recall, the money does not, I, I know that there's a rumor going around that there's funding that the city receives for homelessness. It's my understanding that the funding comes to the county of Siskiyou and then it comes down through, uh, public health and behavioral health. Is that not correct? And the COC?
Very correct. Thank you for making that point.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Well, let's, let's go ahead and move on then unless there's anybody else wants to make any comments on that one. We'll keep, we'll move on. This is a new one. Might have to be refreshed on memory on this one. The discussion possible action, continuation, continuation of urgency on ordinance number eight fifty-five.
Okay, wait a second.
Wait, wait.
That, uh, Joan, I'm sorry, Councilmember Freeman is going to be the representative for the
Oh.
transportation and.
Right. Can I, uh, Mr. Mayor, may I report on that?
What's that?
The city selection committee met last week and all of the cities get together and they appoint the representatives for the city. And I still sit on the local transportation commission, representing all the cities in the county, along with, uh, three, uh, members of the board of supervisors. Uh, and then there's three members, two representatives and one alternate from the cities. Uh, the local, uh, the LAPCO, uh, the, um, city selection committee did appoint one, uh, member and it's the mayor of the city of, of, uh, Dunsmere and his first name is Mark. I, forgive me, I can't remember his last name. He was, uh, nominated by Juliana Lucchese. And then the air pollution, uh, board, which wasn't listed on here, but Steve mentioned earlier, uh, Juliana Lucchese was nominated uh, to be the representative on that. And she's, uh, the former, uh, mayor of the city of Dunsmere. So those were the, those were the three appointments.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for giving him that too.
You're welcome.
Back to number six then. And you want to?
Sure.
Talk about number eight fifty-five for the first time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, uh, members of the council, I did consider, uh, trying to rewrite this ordinance so that we wouldn't necessarily have to talk about it each and every meeting. However, I do think it gives us an opportunity to continue to recognize the impacts of the pandemic, both on our community and this, this as well as the city itself. Um, we obviously as staff are going to recommend that you can continue this, uh, ordinance on into the future. The pandemic is still going on and and we expect it to be going on for quite some time. There are some new, uh, OSHA regulations that were, um, or actually it was through statute, but, uh, there are some new rules that are being enforced by OSHA that the city as well as local businesses will have to be implemented. Um, some of them are best practices from uh, before and some of them are a little bit stricter in terms of the number of days that people need to be out if they are exposed to someone who tested positive for COVID. And there are also some rules that, uh, if they, if they themselves contract COVID on when they can come back. And a number of other, uh, rules in terms of record keeping, uh, really just to try to make things safer, but it also locks it to stone on some of those, those, uh, reporting requirements, the, the time requirements and so on. We will be bringing that, uh, I don't know if we'll be bringing it to, because we adopted that, I love that, the, the staff level. And it really is set out by state law. I don't, I kind of, I was hoping for a little bit more flexibility where it makes sense that we've talked with the Siskiyou Public Health a lot, but it, it really is set out in a very regimented fashion. And so we're simply following that. But I think it would be important for you to see the, I think the thirty-five day document, uh, so that you can see what's, what's happened. I think we may have sent you one plus at the beginning of the pandemic, uh, when we adopted our first round of the employee, uh, something. Player.
Was there something sent out on some of this, the new regulations? Because I thought I read something on, on this new regulation someplace. Did the, did, uh,
Yeah.
Charles send something out or something, maybe?
You probably saw it, uh, from Cal Cities, you know.
Oh, that's right. I think I was.
Right. Probably saw something from Cal Cities. And then also depending on mailing lists you're on, we have gotten it directly from some of the other COVID uh, news organizations, maybe. So, uh, but it is something that we're continuing on. We do have, um, exposures from, from time to time that we have to handle and, and sometimes people are not at work because of things that are happening. Their hustle for the greater community. There's certainly a lot of different ways of contact tracing. I understand there's even a phone app. And I told him, I didn't even know you'd be on my phone. I didn't know about it, but a phone app that can sort of check to see whether you've been hanging out fifteen minutes next to someone. I haven't seen how that works yet. So, anyway. Um, that's just a sort of a short report that the, goes on. Uh, we are encouraged that the vaccine is now available. We have had some staff members who have, uh, first responders that have had shot. And, uh, you're going to two, two parts of vaccination. So, and they define through it and then some others are deciding whether or not they, they feel comfortable at this point.
Yeah.
But in general, it's a good that it's, it's coming along and hopefully will help with the future. So.
That's what we hope. Unfortunately, it's been changing though too across the nation too. So this coronavirus, so we'll see what happens with the new, the new strain that's going around. Hopefully it'll fight it with the, uh, with this vaccination too.
Well, we will, we will, um, with that, I recommend continuing the urgency ordinance eight fifty-five to keep the emergency in place.
I don't know if we would have any comments on from the audience, but we should listen if there's any comments or questions from the audience, but. Nothing?
As a reminder, please press star nine to be recognized to speak to the council. Mr. Mayor, I see no public.
Mr. Mayor, I see no public comments at this time.
All right, thank you, council. All righty.
This is council and McCoy will make the uh, motion that we continue, for the continuation of emergency ordinance number eight five five.
Motion, second.
Councilman Middleton, I'll second.
Motion by Paul McCoy and a second by Corey Middleton. And Mr. Steve Baker.
Mayor, pretend mayor.
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Dig.
Aye, all righty, continuing on. All righty, we'll go into city manager and staff reports. Do you have anything that you want to?
I, I have a couple of brief things that I wanted to mention. I have uh, two staff members that also have uh, reports.
Oh, good.
One is that I received an email today indicating uh, the courthouse uh, is still proceeding. It did get delayed for a number of reasons. It had to do with COVID and weather and a few other things, but so it's about uh, three months behind their original schedule.
Oh.
And uh, but they are thinking that it will be done. They're saying the end of March, so I always say April or spring or something of that nature, but, and it'll probably be a little bit after that before all of the things that they've done uh, at the uh, at their yard there that's blocked off um, Fourth Street.
Oh, yeah.
Before that three open, that will probably be closer to May.
Oh, okay.
Before that happens.
That'll be nice once that's opened up. Some pain having that closed.
Yeah, people have gotten used to it, but yeah, um, and it's a nice looking building. I, I know it's got plastic on it most of the time, but when you peek in the windows.
Yeah.
It's, it's uh, really a vast improvement over what the.
It's pretty amazing.
County courthouse looked like before, so I, I, I continue to give a lot of credit both to the, the staff that worked on it as well as Mary Frances uh, who worked on it there, but also helps uh, get it into that position when she was still the uh, city attorney here. Uh, I want to uh, just say that we survived our first uh, Tuesday meeting of the new year. And uh, it's a little bit strange because it, it changes the whole rhythm, but I think that in the long run, it will work out fairly well. We received a, a weapons report on the Phillips property.
Oh, good.
Uh, I think yesterday, um, I, I briefly reviewed it. It appears that um, most of the uh, parcel that is on Phillips is developable, so that's news. And uh, we will be uh, both getting a copy of that uh, to you as well as discussing what the next steps are at uh, at some point.
Well, that's good.
But that was, that was uh, I, I thought that's a pretty good news. I did go out and uh, with the, the biologist, um, and you know, basically what they do is they dig a hole and they, they go around and uh, have a, they actually have a, it looks like a catalog, almost, looks like a catalog. And they, they do some stuff to figure out the texture there and then they also compare it to color, almost like uh, the paint wheels. It was a pretty interesting thing to do, so anyway, I did get to go out and, and uh, see how that was done because I'd never been out in the field with a biologist doing that. But also encouraged by uh, how much of the property actually.
Is usable.
Is usable, and so that is something for our future that we need to.
No, that's, that's excellent. We just have to love hearing that. That would be good for the future of the city, I'm sure.
So with that, um, I'd like to turn over to, um, we'll start out with uh, Rhonda Hogan who has a um, brief report that she wanted to give and see if she is.
I guess real quick, we um, installed our pay pads this weekend, so where you can swipe and assist customers over the phone with any kind of payment with credit cards or debit cards where prior to that, we were just restricted to utility bills.
Oh, that's great.
Yay, good news, yeah.
That much easier to pay bills. It makes it easier to pay the bills and it just means more money for the city to come in to the ease of, I should say.
We, we, this is part of a long-term strategy that has, was accelerated uh, in, in part because it's still something we've been moving on for. And I really want to thank uh, Rhonda and her staff for working out the, the bikes on that. It's sometimes not easy to do that and uh, they were successful, so. Um, I'm very encouraged. I think it helps out the, the community and I know that there are some types of payments that uh, people otherwise have to go back to the ATM or find their checkpoint which they haven't used very much, so it's really a good thing and as a result, it increases the efficiency of staff to take on other, well, to be able to catch up with the other things that we're doing is probably more accurate.
Well, that makes it less, less uh, people are coming to the window, it takes away from our staff time if they can do it over the phone or however, then it just speeds the process up and lets our staff do their job more efficiently.
For those who are under forty, right?
Yeah.
We're going to use it this year.
Great, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Um, the other department head that I'd like to recognize is uh, Archie Lemus, who.
Still here.
Still here.
Old guy's still here.
Did you hear that, Nathan?
Oh, you got that. Well, I think Nathan's gone.
Oh, darn.
No, Nathan is here. He's just on mute. There he is.
I'm still here.
That older guy has taken audio.
Paying attention, he heard you, Nathan, about the.
Okay, thanks for being here, Nathan. I pre, I do appreciate you.
Not a problem. I'm happy to help. If any of you guys have questions, by the way, just feel free to reach out. Rhonda has my contact information.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to give you a, an update. I think I missed the last time because it was, you know, some of the same uh, song and dance, if you will, but it's been a, twenty twenty was very busy year as I've kind of, I've told you, um, nothing has changed. We're, we exceeded another, uh, made another record in numbers of calls this year. I was, uh, calls for service at eighteen hundred and five. Um, yeah, again, their medicals still working on that, so rest easy that that's still, you know, a work in progress, um, dealing with those is, as they come about for the uh, the repeat calls that we get, uh, those, those seem to be, you know, one goes away, one comes back, so that's, that's always going to be there, I think, with, with what we have. Um, on the very positive side, we have um, three um, members of the COS Fire Academy, the sleepers that have committed, so. Today, the last one was able to come up, so a very nice young man and I'll bring them up to introduce you at some point when they're all here, probably the next, the next meeting, next council meeting. And hopefully if everything goes well and we have uh, potentially three new uh, members, one was uh, Robert Goynett, who was the assistant chief back in the day, you all probably know. Yeah, I know you know him.
Yeah.
Right, so, um, and that he'll be a huge asset from the standpoint of, um, you know, probably being the officer corps again and helping with training, helping with just everything. He's just a good, great all-around.
He's a good guy.
You know, um, he's a Swiss Army knife as far as a firefighter.
Yeah, he is. He's good.
And we're ready. Um, so that will give us, you know, three, three sleepers and, and three, you know, three new uh, members would be really going to help us in, in terms of, you know, manpower. And I also want to report on, um, tag on Steve's uh, statements on the COVID vaccine. Uh, we had first responders at, in our department that received that, yours truly included.
Oh, wow.
On Monday, so we'll have total of, after this week, five, and that's of course despite.
And you're still standing.
I'm still standing, yeah. But no, it was great. The, the staff at Fairchild have done a great job. Super good to work with. It was, it was actually a good experience and I feel good that I did do it, so. But yeah, so far I have a thing on my phone to tell them from having issues.
All right, right.
The recording part of it, so.
Oh, wow.
Anyway, yeah, things are going good. Um, folks are just, you know, doing a good job, you know, running the calls and, and taking care of business and um, a lot of good things coming. So we just have to keep everybody's interest up and I think these sleepers are gonna, they are going to help us. We're going to have some work on our end to get them trained, but they're going to help with those midnight calls and, you know, they're going to get a feel for what it's really like and.
Yeah.
They know that going in, so once we get them trained and they're doing, we're going to show them the ropes, but it's going to be good.
Well, that's awesome. Heard you had a busy afternoon today too.
Had a busy afternoon? That's why I was kind of like scrambling to get here. It was, yeah, one fire, two other calls that were fire-related and it was.
Just all.
And meeting this new gentleman today that's going to be a, you know, come on as a sleeper, so it's uh, yeah, it's very, very positive. They're good, good productive day.
Yeah, we see, we seen the smoke this afternoon. That was like, ooh, wow, that's not good. That was scary.
No, I had a response there as well and um, I'll, I'll also um, let you know that we, uh, we as a department um, connected with Chief Bella from Montague and Chief Bernie Paul from South Oregon. We redid our um, automatic aid agreements, so.
All right.
Responded today on the fires. It started the first one here, so we had automatic help just like that.
Yeah, Montague was there.
Yeah, so, and then um, on the flip side, if they get a fire, you know, we respond out with our ladder truck in town, South Oregon with our engine, whatever they need. So, yeah, going forward, that's going to be another.
That's huge.
Thing we all, we talked about this months ago and finally we were able to put it together and we all agreed, signed it and it's, it's in place.
That's awesome. That'll be so good for the future.
Let her remember that's, that's important. Yeah, today it showed that we had, and then we had another call after while they were still in town, so they came and helped us on that one.
Right.
Flu fire, there wasn't a flu fire.
Oh, is that what it was?
Up on uh, Pyrex.
Yeah, Pyrex, yeah, I heard it was up in that area.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's all I have for you, but I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
I, I'd like to make a couple of statements. One is, thank you so much. I saw your report on Facebook.
Oh, yeah.
Didn't you do?
Paul LeBron, one of our firefighters who's more Facebook avid than I am and I try to delegate to it, they want to do it.
That's a good manager.
Yeah, just let me refreeze it and make sure that, you know, but yeah, so that was a good, you did a good job.
He did a great job.
So you'll see more of those going forward. Trying to do that, it's just slow and coming, but.
But I hear about it. The community appreciates it and so do I. And the other thing is um, your uh, Christmas gift giveaway, that was a very nice, successful. The fire department gives gifts.
Oh, oh, the Santa.
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 Yes, the Santa one. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You know, that's Rusty, Rusty, um, his family's been around here forever. Rusty's our second assistant chief and that's his passion. He loves kids and he, he and others, Jason Sider when he was still a member, um, they put that together and, and they just kept it going and it is, it's.
It's a success.
See those smiles, you know, especially this year. It's like, that's one thing we're not going to stop. We could, we did safely. In fact, I will tell you that we went to the uh, uh, Kuru tribe area on Yellow Hammer. I mean, the people, the kids were, they didn't come out and normally just run up to the truck. They just waited and one at a time came over.
Good boy.
Yeah, they all followed protocol, so that means.
Yeah.
Everybody was very appreciative. Everybody that we went to was, thank you for doing this, so.
You're a great outreach. Really, really great.
Really something we can do, you know, do more than once a year, but that's something that is very special, so.
It is.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, going on, uh, Debbie, because I, my home's located just past the minor street apartments, just almost the last driveway, so I hear you guys coming and then um, you know, to seeing the kids, I stepped out for a few minutes. My dogs were going crazy, but I stepped out and seeing the kids running and excitement and just uh, you know, this is a terrible year. Those kids were so excited and don't need to see, so thank you very much. It's great to see.
I will let the staff know.
Yes, we appreciate it.
Rusty, well, and he was the only one. There was, everybody helped out. We had wives and, and these relatives and of the firefighters that came and helped out.
There's a lot of them there.
Wooden cars, you know, we just paved the materials and they spent all the time making the little wood and that, to me, that's one of the best things in the, in the stockings.
Oh, that one, yeah.
North Pole, so.
That would be cool, like an ornament when they were done now.
Well, they're pretty heavy.
Are they?
Yeah, they're, they're a little heavier, but they're a great little toy, so. That was good. It was a very, very enjoyable evening. It went by without a hitch, so safety first and everything looked good.
Thank you so much, Steve.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
There, that concludes our reports.
All right, well, then we'll move on to councilman's reports. Uh, Joan Smith Freeman, I'll let you go first.
Oh, boy. Thank you. Um, so um, I thought that, that December would slow down, but it didn't really slow down a, a lot. Um, so uh, let's see, I had a local transportation commission uh, meeting this month, uh, and mainly we went over, you know, the uh, the projects that have been worked on this, this year and um, and then we'll be discussing um, at the January meeting, um, the projects that will be going forward and um, Matt was on the call as well, so he's aware that um, you know, that the cities need to be present uh, to come to uh, the, the meeting that they have before the actual LTC meeting and then they look at each city then uh, proposes our projects. And they kind of, um, they uh, always try to be fair since it includes the entire county and all of the cities. Um, and, and uh, we've got our project for Oregon Street and I'm hoping that that's going to be done soon and before the Main Street uh, Caltrans project begins because those are the two main streets in Wyrica. So I know that Matt was on that and um, and, and I was there. I'm still the chair um, for now. Um, and then when we have the election, then it alternates between cities and counties, so then a county supervisor later this year uh, will chair uh, the committee for a year. Um, and then we also, uh, we've been, Arthur and I have been working hard, thank you, Arthur, for all your good work on the aquatics, on the pool committee, and we're looking at some names for it. So if any of you have a good idea other than Wyrica Aquatic Center, which is kind of dry, uh, and Wyrica Pool, of course, um, they're looking for something uh, that, you know, that uh, would be maybe a little more catchy. They're also looking at, and Arthur's been working really hard on the grant. Thank you, Arthur. I know it's taking up a lot of your time. It's a very, very detailed eight million dollar grant that we're applying for and this is the last round um, for this particular Parks and Recs grant. So we're hoping, uh, we've learned in the past what not to do and we're hoping that this year uh, we will be awarded. Um, so anyway, we met December fifteenth and again on December twenty-ninth and we're meeting again on January seventh, right, Arthur? January seventh is the next meeting and uh, so um, I know that Arthur, you've been working really hard with the architect? No. Is it an architect? Who's the gentleman east, um, east?
East, like the engineer.
Yeah, the engineer. Uh, and so we're um, we're looking at, since there's so many things that the public told us that they would like to do with this aquatic center, pool, Siskiyou splash, we've talked about a lot of different names. At, that we've decided that uh, people are asking for more than the grant would provide for. So we're looking at like having phases one, two, and three type thing, uh, because people have also asked for a cover for the pool, you know, retractable cover they're looking at, which would be very expensive. So we're um, we're looking at um, mainly making sure that we get enough money from the state Parks and Recs um, to cover the pool, the basics of the pool and the pool building. And then we're going to look toward having um, nonprofits, community groups uh, help us with fundraising uh, to raise enough money. They want to have like a children's play area. They'd love to have a splash pad. They'd like to have a walking tour, you know, a hiking uh, trail and they would like to have some, you know, some really nice landscaping. Those are probably not things that will be included in the grant. Um, and like, as I said, Arthur, Arthur and Robin mainly are the two that are working on that, right, Arthur? And thank you for all your time and energy that you've put in on that. I know it's very time consuming. Um, it's very, very detailed. So we've been meeting about every two weeks on that. So anybody that wants to join us, you're more than welcome to. Um, so, so the two pool meetings that, oh, and I also had a uh, uh, our division, our Cal Cities, as it's called now, our Cal Cities Division uh, meeting and decided that this meeting, um, the next in-person meeting that was supposed to take place in January has been postponed due to COVID. Uh, as well as Lola, the Lola meeting that's supposed to be next Wednesday has been uh, postponed. It was supposed to be in Montague. So it's the only restaurant in Montague closed the end of the year. So they don't have anybody over there that could uh, provide the meal. So uh, for now, um, you know, we're trying to do things by Zoom, so um, let's see, what else? I know that there's another meeting that I'm forgetting. Uh, as I said, I thought that December would slow down, but it didn't, didn't really slow down a lot. There was uh, still a lot going on right up till the end, the last uh, uh, well, this, oh, and the city selection committee, which I told you earlier about the appointments on city selection, so, and I'm no longer chair of that. So the new chair of the city select, been chair the last two years, the new chairman of that is Sue Tavallaro, the mayor of the city of Wee. Uh, and I know that she'll do a great job. So uh, and the. So, and the secretary is still Tiffany Lorenzini, who is the mayor of the city of Montague. So, and that was on the twenty ninth. So I think that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan, you're busy.
Yep.
Mr. Paul.
Thank you.
Well, I, I want to remind everybody that it looks like Ashland, Medford are councils are all doing remote meetings. COVID is definitely something that is, you know, that we need, we're dealing with. I would like to ask the mayor and the city manager if we might get the county in here at our next meeting to talk about their plan for disseminating the vaccine. I see that the vaccine is spoiling in a lot of places. They have only given three million of the 10 million that they've sent out nationwide have been administered. And I looked at the county's plan, but I'm not so sure that the average person is going to understand it. And my concern for any of the counties and states is that they're just now doing their plans. And I'm wondering why they weren't done two months ago, three months ago, when we knew that, 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 that the vaccine was coming along in December. So I would love to have somebody at our next meeting at the county come and explain the plan and go over it and give us a presentation.
That'd be great. You know, I think that's a good idea, just to listen to see how it's, what the plan is about.
And remind Wryka citizens to tune in, to watch, you know.
I think it'd be, yeah, very educational for the citizens to know what's going on too.
So I, because I too, like you, am worried about mutations. I, I have nephews that work in hospitals as doctors and then, and also in other medical capacities. And San Diego has three mutations so far. All seem to be, all seem to be, the vaccine is okay with them, but they're, and then we also know that now people between the ages of about eighteen and fifty don't need a full dose. They only need a half dose. That means you've got double the number of doses. This is according to mainstream media. This isn't according to a liberal or a conservative organization, you know. So I wanted to, thanks, Steve, for looking into, to the courthouse, because I had talked to Renee about it also, thinking, you know, because they were looking at, you know, us being, being open, driving back through it in December and now because of COVID and other things. So I appreciate that. I do want to add that initially, when Mary Francis was with the county, there was a stipulation or a deal or whatever you want to call it that happens quite frequently in, in jobs like this whereby money is set aside for either.
Over.
Cultural things, that sort of thing. And there was a Leon McFadden in South County that had been committed to. And then, and then at a later date, the, the head, the general contractor said, no, we can't do it. We don't have the money. I want to thank Kim Presley from Grenada for working with Renee and getting, taking, making that happen, that that Leon McFadden is going to hang in the lobby. I just heard that from Renee, that it's going to hang in the lobby. For those that don't know, Leon McFadden has, I think he has one portrait of Reagan hanging in the, I want to say it's in the Smithsonian.
Smithsonian, right.
If you haven't seen his work, there's a Leon McFadden at Scott Pauli Bank. It's a, it's a western scene, and Leon paints his stamps. He's deceased now, but he's a very, very talented man. So I was real, real happy when Renee said, I just thought that was great. And I want to thank Renee and Kim and everybody that worked on that to get that in there, so to get it back. So let's see, let's see. Oh, I'm going to say this, but Dwayne, you're probably going to say more. I want to let the rest of the council know that Dwayne and Steve and I took a tour in Dwayne's pickup. And we went through almost, we didn't go through every homeless camp, but we went through about eighty percent of them from about four o'clock till six o'clock, starting to get dark, looking to see how we can help the homeless to prevent fire and to help for health, sanitation, and safety within, within what's going on right now. So I'm not going to say any more than that, but we are going to meet again. We're very active and we'll be meeting on Monday next, just as, you know, to go and look at some more camps and that kind of thing. But the, the bottom line is just trying to figure out what, what we can do individually to aid the county Beacon of Hope, the county behavioral health, county public health Beacon of Hope, and.
Resource Center?
Resource Center, because it is a multifaceted issue. And if you travel to Ashland or Medford, you will see that in their camps. It's a very multifaceted issue.
Well, we also need to state that it covers more than that, you know, Siski domestic violence.
Yeah, absolutely.
And there's, there's numerous other organizations that are involved in, in this, this meetings we do and stuff. Because it's, that's the only way that we can help address the situation is to get as many people involved, many hands involved in making it happen. Because just us trying to tackle this is not going to work.
Because the issue really isn't homelessness. The issue is drugs, mental health, finances. It's, it's a multi, yes. So, you know, I just want to thank you for, and Steve, for, you know, going out with me. So I can take a look. I'm happy to say that I'm going to take a ride along on the fifteenth.
Ride along.
With Pat, Officer Pat Dirksen from seven PM to five AM, and I'm looking forward to it. I've only been on daytimes, so it'll be, it'll be different at nighttime. And then. Yeah, one, one of the things I just want to make sure the council knows is something that, that Steve and I discussed. And I used to ask her to think, just to not say anything, but just think about it was, you know, talking about having, some businesses are doing like a team one, team two. So one team is in one week and one team is in the next, or team A and B, or you're in for two weeks and then another team's in. And one of the things that I, you know, made to mention to Steve is just to look at that, because that way you, they know when they're going to be in and when they're not going to be in if somebody gets COVID. Because I think it's probably fairly, I think COVID is much, and I'm not a big, you know, disease guy, but I think COVID is much worse than people are thinking. And I think it's going to hit us close to, closer to home within, you know, our ranks. And so, you know, just to help them to be prepared, you know, I talked about that. It does mean, as Steve talked about, some people, you know, if they're gone, nobody else can cover their job. And so I understand that, you know, and cross training will help that, but not right now. I understand that too. The other thing that I suggest, I would say right now, is I suggested that they go to a nine to four also. So that's, if you hear it, I suggested it, and it didn't come from Steve, came from right here.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, so anyway, thank you.
That's good. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Milton, you have something?
I don't have too much. I just had a call from a citizen a few days ago, talking about how dark it is at the crosswalk by the Valero Station. And he said that he almost ran somebody over because it was so dark there. And he said, two cars coming that, the opposite direction, almost hit the person as well. They all locked up, almost ran him over. And he said, you know, there's cities, you know, have the lights that light up, you know, you've talked about it before. And he was wondering why during the negotiation or discussion with the Caltrans, they're ready to do Main Street, why that wasn't proposed, that we tackle that, to have them install that on that crosswalk and even down by Round Table. I've seen it down there as well. Because when it rains, it is so dark there. I'm guilty of it too. I had a slam on my brakes, someone came out. And it's so dark, but he said it was almost, this person was hit by three different cars. And so they're really concerned. And so, yeah, something needs to be done there. It's really dark, even if lights, it is really dark at that crosswalk.
We can do it if we just come up with an extra twenty or forty thousand dollars, right?
So that's, I guess, that's the big thing is, we did, I think we did address that to the state. As far as I know, they said that basically if we want to do it, we have to do it, right? But I think we did talk as a council that possibly that might be one of the options that we do or something that we. Flashing lights.
They've already got sharp teeth there.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing I know we're, we're, keep in mind too, of this whole scenario, is when Main Street does get renovated, that's going to be unfortunately a two-lane road, good and bad. But it will slow traffic down and it'll, it'll consolidate traffic where more people will be focused on paying attention to. So that would be one thing, but there definitely, we definitely, as a council, we definitely need to think about what direction we want to go with in those, in those two areas, especially, you know, like you said, that's, that's a high traffic area anymore.
Yes, it is.
As far as citizen walking pedestrians, I should say. And down there further where the old hospital is, is another area that we've addressed. And another one we even talked about, I think, was even clear over by the north end of town, by towards the high school and stuff, was possibly.
Didn't, didn't YPD say that that's the most, that Valero right there, that's the most vehicle, person, accidents in the, yeah, I think that was something, yeah.
Many, many times.
But I think the calming, I think the calm, when they, when they go to two lanes, they call it calming.
Yes.
I think the calming of the traffic will make a difference. I'm trying to think of where I was the other, the other day, Red Bluff or Anderson or Willows or somewhere. And I drove and I thought, boy, it does. It really slows everybody down because they go from Tulane. Then you have all those big parking spaces too, so.
Yeah, the only, the only thing as well, unfortunately, I'm sure we're going to hear a lot of a response on, on that calming it a little too much.
Oh, yeah. Subnallian, we'll call it subnalliancy.
I can hardly wait to see how the logging trucks make it through.
Oh, man, yeah. Anything else to?
No, other than that, that's a good point. Just looking for the, the new year and getting started.
Yes.
On a fresh new year here with you guys and hopefully, if you don't talk about the vaccine, I hope it rolls out pretty soon to, you know, I'm going to take it, you know, when they, when I'm able to, so I hope they get it going and that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. You know, the protein to be heard.
Well, actually, I'm pretty bored. Nothing's going on. All my meetings have been canceled. Got a notice from LAFCO that no meetings through January or February.
Or February, too.
Planning ahead.
Yeah.
And I think I haven't heard from Collier, so we'll see what happens. But no, I've got lots of spare time now.
I'd like the rest of us to have spare time. Well, thank you. Okay, well, I, I've talked about the homelessness. We'll get into that. Like I said, we're definitely addressing a lot of issues. We're going to, the next couple of weeks, we're going to be figuring out a lot of, hopefully, direction that we can turn this around and make some big differences. It's only going to get worse before it gets better, unfortunately, with the, with everything that's going on in the world, especially in this West Coast with the fires that happened and all that. The homeless rates, they're predicting to go up at least another ten percent is what I've heard, the numbers I've heard, which is, can be real drastic in some areas, especially our area. We're, like I said, we are definitely going to be addressing a lot of huge issues, bringing forth that to the council too, as far as discussion wise here in the future, real close, you know, real near future. But we are addressing it and I'm always definitely willing to listen to any suggestions that the, the public has. So if anybody wants to give me a call and have some positive direction to help us go the right way, then I'm all for it. In conjunction to that, we're, I think I stated this last time, we're not doing the point in time count to count the homeless for the unsheltered. That's the unsheltered only. We are still doing the sheltered count, which is real tricky because obviously we don't have a shelter. But people don't realize that Behavioral Health, Family Resource Center, the Siski domestic violence, and there's a number of organizations actually do put people up in motels and in places. So those are classified as sheltered places. So those will get counted. Those people will still get counted. And the way things have been going with the COVID and everything, there was, through the county, there was special funding that the county received for, because of the COVID, for homeless people. So there was definitely some funding going around, like I said, through the behavioral health that they were doing, putting people up and actually traders, nice traders, these are brand new traders that they got funding for to put because of COVID.
They're FEMA traders, right?
FEMA traders, then like I said, that were through, because of the COVID funding, and they actually have more traders that they are getting through the county that addresses just homelessness period, not through, because of COVID, but through homelessness. So they're going to, I think they're going to be up to ten or twelve traders that they're going to be doing for homelessness. So that's, that's huge. That was funding that, that the county worked on. And because of the meetings that we were, that we've been doing, where they were able to communicate, cross communicate through different agencies and was able to get this funding and get it pushed forward. We, I must add too, that as, from what I've heard, that we're the only county in, in California that received this funding for these traders. So that's huge because of what we're doing. So there is stuff going on. People don't see it, but there is definitely stuff going on that's, that's not being done other places because of our organization. In talk of going into that, I would like to, if I can, doesn't necessarily have to be the next city council meeting, but the following one, just an update. Actually, because we'll have Don on the next city council meeting, I'll talk to him. But I would like to get some type of update on the shopping cart ordinance. I'm not sure if it's on his desk now or whose desk it is, but if we could get some type of update on that, it'd be greatly appreciated. Because we, we have a few shopping carts and we need to get rid of some.
Hundred and seventy-five.
Hundred and seventy-five to get the exact telephone.
I said, I'll bring. I trailer my trucking.
Yeah, it's going to take a lot of trucking, trailer to haul those off. That's a lot of, a lot of shopping carts, but that's, so if we get this ordinance going, hopefully we won't have as much problem with this in the future. The other thing is I'd like to, is, I don't know if this is something you've already discussed, Steve, and is bringing the art walks to the next agenda. Is that the next one we're talking about? I know we were talking about doing it in January, so I think we have to be on the next agenda then, don't we?
We're shooting for that at this point. I need to talk to staff about that.
Okay, okay, because I know I've already got some regards to that, quite a few lately, some emails regards to that.
I received one too.
So if, yeah, if we can have that for the discussion, that would be great. See if we can bring that up, if it's, if at all possible. So we did, we did make that promise back when we had this discussion last, so. And it was brought up on city council. We bring it back in January. So if at all possible, I know that the public would like to hear about that too.
And there seems to be a, let me, please forgive me, Mr. Mayor, there seems to be a misconception. This is a city-sponsored event.
Yes, it's not a city.
This is not a city-sponsored event.
No.
So I just, you know, people need to understand.
Yeah, and that's something we can bring up this next meeting too, and reiterate that, that it is, this is a private.
Because it would seem that people, people think we're, that the city of Wryka is sponsoring it and.
Well, I guess part of that confusion was because when I was on the chamber, we started these art walks.
Sure.
And we, the way we presented it, it was almost like it was a city-sponsored event. It kind of was, the way we, way we rolled with it on the beginning of these art walks. This was, this has been a number of years ago when we started this. And it was a huge success back then. It was different setup than what's going on now. But it still, at that point in time, was not, even then, a city-sponsored event. It was a city-supported event.
We, we are, we, the city supports.
Correct.
We supported.
Exactly. And that's what, we can do, reiterate, that's it. It was a city-supported event, and we want to continue supporting this event. So this is what we need to clear the air and get everything in forward motion again and.
Finish it. Finish it.
And finish it like slightly promised, so. All right, well, if that's, if there's nothing else anybody else wants to add, then we can close this meeting. Are we going into closed session?
We are going to adjourn to closed session.
We are going to adjourn to closed session.
How well behaved we are now. Thank you, sir.
And your, your cell phone is on your profile and looking at it right here.
Yeah, we're still.
Yes.
Oh, there's Don.
Hello, Don.
Hi, Don.
So Arthur, at this point, is everyone off, except those that can be in closed session, City Attorney, Councilman Freeman, a bunch of chairs, which we all occupy.
Joe, don't point that finger at your computer. So, so Steve, what I was planning to do was. So, so Steve, what I was planning to do was, um, uh, make the account, uh, that you're using the, uh, host and then log out unless you wanted me to stick around for, uh, closed session.
Uh, no, you can, you can go ahead and maintain the host. That's not, I don't do anything.
Okay, you've got it. Then, uh, I'll say good night to everyone.
Thank you.